Just a reminder, if anyone wants to address council, make sure you sign in over there. We're going to take that up in just a few minutes. If you're not signed up, please sign the list if you want to address council. Last call for the sign in sheet. If anybody needs to sign in to speak, please do so before she takes it up. All right, at 6:30, we'll call the Loud City Council meeting for August 25th, 2025 to order. First item of business is we've got some special guests, visitors here with us. Pastor Jeremy Freeman is going to lead our invocation. He was pastor of Loud and Faith Community Church, has been for the last two years. But more importantly than that, he also works for facilities and maintenance. Been there 17 years. So Jeremy, we thank you for serving our community as one of our workers and also as a pastor. He's brought with him his niece, Abby Scott, sixth grader at Philadelphia Elementary School. So I'm going to ask everyone to stand. Jeremy's going to lead the invocation. Abby will lead our pledge.
Lord, we just thank you for the day that you gave us. Most importantly, Lord, we thank you for who you are and what your son does for us on the cross. Lord, we thank you for the business that we're about to do. Lord, we pray that you just guide us through that distance. Lord, we pray that you guide each and every one of these individuals, Lord, to just do your will, Lord, to the best of their ability, Lord, for the best of our community, Lord, for the best of our city. Lord, we pray that you just be with each and every one of them, Lord, that you would touch us and guide us. Lord, continue to just help us to be a light of this city, Lord, that we can be a light in a lost and dying world. Lord, we just thank you for all you do for us. Lord, and I pray if there's one here tonight that's unsaved, Lord, that they make the day to day before it's too late. Lord, we just ask all these things are lovely and holy, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeremy and Abby. Could you all be right up there in front? I was going to make you give a speech. Get a little flag. You dress for it, too. And here's a token and a little label, lapel pin. Jeremy, thank you for your work with Loud, with our city and for pastoring the church. She's going to take a picture. All right, thank you very much. All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Here.
Councilmember Cardwell.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Councilmember Riddings.
Here.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for coming to the monthly meeting of the Loud City Council. My name is Mayor Jeff Harris. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. Tennessee law gives every Tennesseean the right to attend city council meetings and to observe how their government is doing business. We appreciate each of you taking time from your own personal schedule to be here tonight to see how our city government works. It's my intention as your chair to create a space where everyone feels seen, heard, respected, and valued. You should have a copy of tonight's agenda. If you don't have one, you can pick one up on the table or right at the back of the room. The agenda is your guide to the business we'll take care of tonight. In order to conduct efficient, businesslike meetings, the council has adopted some specific rules to follow. Primarily, these rules are designed to keep the meeting moving, assure that all points of view are heard and considered, and to provide for common courtesy. In a few minutes, we'll come to a place of the agenda entitled citizens input, where anyone who has signed in to speak to councils is encouraged to do so. We do have, or ask that you wait till you've been recognized before you speak. After being recognized, approach the podium and address the council, but follow three simple rules. At the beginning of your presentation, please state your name for the record. Address all your questions to myself, who is the chair, and avoid the use of improper language, profanity, or any other inappropriate conduct. Once the citizens input portion of the meeting is over, the council will proceed with the rest of tonight's agenda. You're welcome to stay and observe the meeting, but be advised that any additional public comments will be limited to three minutes each and at the discretion of city council. We ask everyone, remember, we're doing the people's business here tonight, which is a very important responsibility for all of us. You can help us do this business by observing the rules we've established for our meetings. Again, welcome to the Loud City Council meeting. We're glad that everyone is here tonight. All right, I want to welcome all of our visitors, but we've got another. I have a certificate of appreciation to share with Judge Roger Dell. He's just retired, so for Roger to come up here, I have a certificate to read. This says certificate of appreciation Judge D. Roger Dell. Whereas Honorable D. Roger Dell was appointed as the City of Loud judge by Mayor Judy Keller of March 29, 2012. And whereas Honorable D. Roger Dell has selfishly served as a city judge since then with distinction, integrity, wisdom, and unwavering commitment to justice. And whereas Honorable D. Roger Dell has served countless hours of his time and wisdom, serving the needs of others, bringing clarity to complex matters, compassion to different, difficult circumstances, and fairness to every decision rendered from the bench, upholding the law and elevating the standards by which justice is delivered. And whereas Honorable D. Roger Dell enters a well-earned retirement, we express our deepest gratitude and admiration. May this next chapter be filled with peace, joy, and the same sense of purpose that defined his time on the bench. And whereas the City of Loud is enormously grateful for the knowledge, wisdom, good leadership, care, and commitment that the Honorable D. Roger Dell has given, representing the true meaning of a community servant and leader. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jeff Harris, to hereby wear this certificate of appreciation to the Honorable D. Roger Dell for his many years of dedicated service and lasting contributions to this City of Loudon, dated this 25th day of August, 2025. Thank you. Goodwill. Do you have any, any words to share?
I just wanted to thank council for giving me the opportunity to serve in this position. It wasn't anything I was looking for at the time because I was already retired. But anyway, it's been nice, but it's time for me to move on.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, next item is to adopt the agenda that was prepared. I have most to adopt the agenda. Can you have a second?
Sure.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So our agenda is adopted. Next item is citizens input. So first item, first person to sign in is Brian Byers. So Brian, come up and guess what's on your mind.
Good morning, I mean, good evening. Nice to meet you, Brian Byers. I live out on Stockton Valley Road. And I understand that the landfill has been an issue for quite some time now. I just wanted to bring it to the city's attention that they've been having some secret meetings behind closed doors about selling the landfill. I didn't know if the council had known about that or not. Back on around June 19th or so, they're supposed to have been having some legality issues with attorneys and the members of Republic. And they was having meetings about resolutions for the mud and ongoing problems with the landfill. And come to find out, they're having backdoor meetings about selling the landfill. And I don't know if anybody knows about it, but I want to bring it to attention. I think if they decided to do that, it would be a bad impression for our community because that gives us that much longer of a time to deal with their mess. I think the solid waste board needs to hold them accountable for their actions. And I don't think selling it is the easy way out. And that's just my opinion on it, and I look for y'all to investigate that and see what's going on.
All right, thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Next one on the agenda is Ms. Carter.
Good evening. Just curious if you guys are aware of the discussions to sell the landfill?
I can't speak for the whole council, but yes, I'm aware.
Okay, we just, we just recently found out about it. So we live on Matlock End, and there is significant issues. They don't cover the dirt, I mean, they don't cover the trash with dirt in the evenings. We have multiple pictures. And I think the reason I want to bring it up tonight is I think you're creating a huge issue if that happens because you're simultaneously approving, you know, high-density property right next to the landfill, which they're not good neighbors. They don't do the things that they're supposed to do. We're going to have lack of oversight. I mean, tipping fees are going to go up. There's a very good chance they could make it a regional landfill. I don't know if people understand what that means, but it's bringing in trash from 60 counties if they have the opportunity to make it a regional landfill. We've owned property there. Our family's owned property there since the 80s. But all of the new people coming in, I think that this council and the county commission needs to consider high-density development right next to a landfill. I mean, yes, we have to have a landfill, but we don't have to have a regional landfill. And we don't have to lose our transparency and our leverage over them. I'm positive that they're leaching into the Tennessee River. There's so many streams around that there's no way that it's not leaching. I think there's multiple stories where the cows are getting sick. And like our well, we can't even use our well on our property. Nobody on Matlock End can use their well. So approving property at the same time that we're talking about selling the landfill and losing all community oversight, I think it's, I think it's poor planning. So I strongly urge that we do not sell the landfill to Republic.
Okay, thank you for coming. Okay, Ms. Hunter.
My name is Pat Hunter, and my address is 416 Chestnut Ridge Drive, Lenore City, Tennessee. I have been attending solid waste commission meetings since the late 1999. So I've been involved with the landfill community issues for a long, long time because back when the landfill was established, it was for our community use and our growing counting. And we are growing by leaps and bounds. Loudon is growing, Lenore City, the county. I think what concerns me the most is the fact that on June 19th, the meeting was taking place. And about 30 minutes into the meeting, unbeknownst to me, the camera went dark. It turned off. I have the only recording to the meeting. And the meeting lasted an hour and 10 minutes recording time. And, but there was an executive session, so I had to turn it off while they went into the back room and spoke about, or they were supposed to ask questions about pending litigation. When they came out, there were certain motions that were made that are not recorded in the minutes. One was to increase the legal, the attorney's fees from 380 to 480, and to hire additional co-counsel, and to also hire expert witnesses because they were anticipating litigation about the mud on the road, about the leach, terrible leach problem that still remains, you know, they're working on it, but it hasn't been addressed completely. A bond, the bond that is required by the county and Republic because there's closure and post-closure. And remember that post-closure now is not 30 years, it is 50 years now. We are responsible for the landfill. Even if we sell it, it's another poplar spritz, we're responsible for it for 50 years. What concerns me is that there were specific things that they were going to look at, they were going to discuss. We would later learn that the meeting was going to be held on July 25th. It was going to be strictly Chairman, his counsel, our counsel, Republic and their counsel. They were supposed to go over the long list of issues that are still pending. What we learned at this meeting was, and I asked, what are the resolutions to the mud issue? What are the short term and long term? And they don't have any. And that's what concerns me greatly because that was one of the top items to be addressed. Instead, Chairman Waller spoke about selling the permit and the land. Now, if you've been around as long as I have, you know that this has been discussed before. Back in 2015, back in 2016, back in 2021, you actually had a questionnaire where the stakeholders were asked, do you want to go out of the landfill business? And the answer was no. I think what concerns me now is that the discussions went into the executive session, and really, they had no business being there because that was never part of the motion. The motion was to address the issues at hand, and that was never discussed. So I would have a big concern with the lack of transparency. Like I said, I handed out some articles in 2015, 2016, 2021. It was discussed in, in public. And matter of fact, Mr. Shaver brought it up on April 18, 2016, the discussion of the possible sale of the landfill. It's been discussed before, but it's been done in public, not in the back room. And what concerns me the most about this is a landfill that is managed by Republic. And I'll send this copy to you so you'll have it. They manage and own a landfill. It's actually owned by BFI and Republic. It's called Middle Point Landfill. And it, it sounds like a nightmare there. And I'm trying to, I'm hoping that we don't get caught up in the same thing because this isn't about one company's profits. This is about our quality of life. This is about the people that live in our community and what they want for themselves, for the children, for the future. And, you know, that landfill has made millions and millions of dollars. The last time I looked at it, it was like $50 million in gross tipping fees. And out of that, it was a 95, 5% split. The county, the stakeholders were getting 5%. 95% was going to Santech. Now we're at a 90-10 split with Republic getting 90% and the stakeholders getting 10%. Now that 10% is not going to, to cover post-closure for 50 years. That's all there is to it. It was, it was a bad contract. And if they want to do anything, they need to go back and renegotiate the contract. But selling the landfill shouldn't be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I don't thank all three of you for coming and addressing this, just as matter of transparency. Adam Waller, the chairman, did call me and tell me they were discussing the potential of the sale. That was just basically the message he gave me. You know, we're just, we're one of the three stakeholders in the landfill. It's not on our agenda tonight to get into that. That's not something we plan, but we appreciate y'all coming and voicing your concern. Okay? Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from July 28, 2025.
Mayor and council, I have reviewed the minutes from July 28, and they appear in order.
Can you have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Can you have a second? Kenny, okay. Any question about the minutes? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, we have a resolution authorizing bank account signatures. This is the.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Have a motion of second. This is adding the newly created city position of sister recorder to be authorized as our checks. Okay, we have a motion of second. Any questions about what the motion second is for? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have some ordinance on second reading. First one is amending the zoning map of the City of Loud, Tennessee. Pursuant to 13-7-203, 13-7-204, of the Tennessee code annotated to reasonable property located on Matlock Bend Road, tax map 032, parcel 001, property 26.4 acres from R2 High Density to Plan Development District. The Loud Region Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning with a unanimous vote. This is, we're going to the Tennessee National Plan Development District.
I'm making motion.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion of second for Councilman Newman. Any questions concerning the rezoning? Mayor, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
All right.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cardwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Riddings.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
And next ordinance on second reading is an ordinance to replace Title 18, Chapter 2 of the City of Loud municipal code. This is, as we said.
Motion to approve.
Cross connection control ordinance. So have a motion, have a second.
Thank you.
Motion of second, any questions? This again was discussed pretty thoroughly after workshop. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cardwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Councilmember Riddings.
Yes.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
Break up Loud on first reading. The first one is amending the zoning map of the City of Loud, Tennessee. Pursuant to 13-7-203, 13-7-204, Tennessee code annotated rezoned property located on Commerce Street, tax map 041B, group A, parcel 22, 23, 24.01, from C1 to P1. And the Loud Region Planning Commission recommends the rezoning request from applicants, property owners, Bill and Sherri Watkins, and 12 Holdings LLC for rezoning.
Motion.
Have a motion of second, motion of second, any discussion?
Can you just give me just a quick update since I'm commissed in? So what's the, what's the genesis behind it and what are we trying to accomplish?
The applicants are here.
Okay, Bill, you want to address it?
Sure.
Yeah, that's right, you were.
Our buildings that we're requesting to be rezoned are located in the C1, Central Business District. Have it for several decades. This request that we're making is for a P1 zoning based on what Ben and I feel is a more appropriate zoning for a versatile future use of these buildings. We've worked and we, and I'm still working to keep these buildings in their historic architectural style, but also still keep within code specifications. The P1 provisions have many sections that overlap C1, so it's very, very similar. But the P1 designation, as it implies, P1 leans more towards professional use and also has more residential versatility. Ben and I feel that these, these properties will blend very well with the businesses that are already present downtown, along with the residential section that's zoned at C1, but it's presently has small houses that are next to us on the river side. So we feel that at least the versatility of having the P1 designations allows us to have more opportunities to do things with this, especially with the buildings that Sherri and I own. Whether some of the specifics in the P1 designation specifically mention schools. Sherri's been involved with teaching spinning, weaving, other fiber classes over at Paul Prentfall State Park for the last three years. And this is something that we still see as at schools being actually specifically mentioned in P1. It lends itself very well for us to move into that. Other things too with engineering offices, other professional offices, which, which attract me, are also specifically mentioned, even though they're possible under C1. It lends itself a little bit more, at least in its designation, to be able to use it in these ways. This is the reasoning behind Ben and ours approach to be able to have this area zoned in this way.
There's a lot of mixture down there with, like you said, there's a house right behind this property and an Airbnb behind the other property. You know, and then across the street, retail, and there's even a real estate office in that same area too. So it's a combination.
That includes the yellow house.
Yes.
And also the brick building that's attached to it.
Yep, the narrow brick, narrow brick buildings.
And so what's, what are you looking at doing for both properties right now?
The, the brick building lends itself more for, it doesn't have a lot of floor space. And it has an upstairs room also that was, for years was used by Sherri's grandfather as a, as just a small, efficient residence. So this was, this lends itself more to have a single, a small office for financial, for engineering, a single or maybe double engineering office, things that are small professional, like that where you only have one or two employees. The house itself is more problematic, but is ideal. The house itself is more problematic, but is ideal actually to have instructional classes, especially of craft nature, things like that, and still be able to maintain its, its historical appearance. That's basically what we thought. You know, if, if I were a school teacher, I would have thought it may, may make a great Montessori school or something like that, but that's just as an example.
And what about, are you Ben?
Yes.
Okay, and your property?
What's the question?
And what's the, the intent of your property?
To use as a home.
Okay. And no other, just no, just-
Flat out with, single family residence.
Any other questions for the property owners? Anybody? Okay, we have a motion of second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Riddings.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dixon. Councilmember Cardwell. Councilmember Newman. Mayor Harris. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
So we'll set up public number 620.
On September 22nd.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Uh, next one is amending the 2025, 2026 fiscal year budget. You saw those amendments in your packet. Our city recorder, I'm sure, will be glad to answer your question if she had anything about that. Do I have a motion to approve those? Okay, have a second. And which we know this K9 was the biggest part of that. This is what we talked about at the workshop. I think it was like $1,000 and something of the, compiled that amendment, most of the majority of that, so, uh, any questions about, about that?
Did it all come from the doorstep?
That was quite a question. Is it all doorstep?
Good question. I know we talked about that at the workshop.
Motion.
Can we have a motion? We already had a- Is that third? Okay, all right, roll call. Any other discussion?
Does Loudoun own the dog? Are we purchasing the dog here?
Yes.
We are purchasing the, the K9 from Loudoun County Sheriff's Office.
We get to rename it to that Big Red or something?
I can't answer that question.
Oh, we owned it off. We owned it.
The trader.
Handler, handler, it's a handler.
Yeah, the handler, yeah. Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dixon. Councilmember Newman. Councilmember Cardwell. Councilmember Riddings.
Oh, yes.
Mayor Harris.
So we set that for 625?
On September 22nd.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Department of Reports. Let's see, I can't say Mark. So, uh, City Engineer, do you have anything? Professor Spencer, go ahead, thank y'all for being here. Nothing to report, uh, no senior staff. Melissa, you have anything?
Um, going on at this time, thank you, ma'am.
All right, Council, Councilmember Reports. Councilmember Newman, you have to do a report. Nothing to report this time. Okay, Vice Mayor Dixon from Planning?
We did, we had a historic zoning commission meeting on the August 6th, uh, advocate 194, application for search case of progress for installation of owning. Advocate Lee N. Kennedy, property owner, Jan Van Gash. It's 404 Wolf Street, uh, for Firefly Business. That was unanimously accepted.
Which business on what? The nail place? Yes.
Yeah, yeah. That's what they call it, Firefly.
No, the Firefly is one of the pretty places used to be.
The wine bar.
Right next to Coffee Culture.
So it, so the owning's on the wine bar or the nail bar?
The wine, the wine bar, it's going to go all the way across Coffee Culture and-
They have two different names on it, yeah. I forgot. Advocate 197, application for search case of progress, advocate Harper Design Studio, owner Sergio Tenoco, 521 Commerce Street. Uh, that was unanimously approved.
That was the remodeling of the old high school. The building is still up there, putting condos.
The public condos.
This was historic zoning, right?
Yes.
I bet it's all historic.
Mr. Regional?
Yeah, I got time.
Okay.
I got to meet and have a paper. All right, the Regional Planning Commission, uh, advocate 193, preliminary plant review, Tennessee National Marina District Phase 2. Advocate Tyler Gross, property owner, Tennessee National LLC. Uh, that was recommended to City Council from-
And we approved that just tonight, isn't it?
Yes. Advocate 196, resulting request from C1 Central District to P1 Professional and Civil District. Advocate's property owner, Bill and Sherri Watkins, and 12 Holding LLC. That was recommended, we approved that also.
Okay. DCA?
Now the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, we had Act 195, variance request to reduce front yard setback from 30 feet to 24 feet at 938 Mulberry Street. Advocate Juan Garcia, property owner, Rebecca Trigg. That was also approved.
That's, that's the property right next to Cinco. Maybe she's closing her front porch. You see the work on it. It used to be the beauty shop.
With the hearing, though.
Yeah, the audio.
Sandy's Beauty Shop.
Used to be Sandy's Beauty Shop.
Okay, and they're doing what to it?
Closing in the front porch to have a waiting area, I think, for, for customers.
Yeah, they already closed in their back part. Now they're closing in that front.
What used to be the-
Front corridor.
Yeah. Yeah, no, the corridor's already closed in.
This is the front porch.
You can go by there now, you can see the studs up there.
And what was the, I know 20, from 30 to 24, why did they have to set back if it was already in its original footprint, right?
Original footprint, um, it's a matter of wall closure as opposed to porch.
The wall, the carport, please, please, that.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Okay, uh, Councilmember, and I'm going to go back and do the field quote in the fourth and 10 second. Councilwoman Cardwell?
Loudoun Utility Board met today at 4:30. We had a resolution also authorizing the bank account signatures, adding the new position of assistant recorder as a signature. We approved a proposal for professional services with Schneider Electric Services for arc flash risk assessment and power system study proposal. We also approved change order three for the low volume pump station improvements, and we set the national, uh, natural gas rate at 117 per cubic feet per year starting September 1st. And others, um, just let you know that tomorrow at 11:30 at the Rhode State Community College, I'll attend a, a Tennessee Riverline meeting.
I'd love to go in there. I can't make it, so.
To, and really that sort of a two-hat, uh, that's so that whatever the Riverline's doing is in conjunction with the downtown master plan to make sure that's all meshed. Also at 9:30 tomorrow, we'll have another Zoom meeting on the downtown master plan. Just update there, um, we received over a thousand online responses for the input for the master plan. The open house didn't have quite as many as we thought, but, uh, but still got some good feedback from the, the folks that did show up. So now taking that data, they also downloaded a, a pre-good report. Mayor and I were on a phone call of the economic and sort of the, the economic development data, uh, sort of very interesting. And if anybody wants that report, let us know and we can, uh, we can get it to you. And so a lot of it's coming together now.
Yeah, I think it's phase two, didn't they say it's phase two?
So now they're going in phase two, and they're going to start developing some drafts off of all the data people got them, so, uh, so that's moving along. The Historic Advisory Committee didn't meet this month because that was on the same night as the open house, so we're, uh, we'll have more here in a, in a month on that. But we are still moving forward on, uh, walking trails, still trying to get the, uh, things written up on that, waiting to see our, our grants come in. We've got, uh, two grants that, uh, we'll hit and we'll start working for, uh, the next phase on all that. That's all it happens.
Okay. Kenny, anything?
Yes, sir.
One thing I did want to bring up, you'll start hearing more about, uh, the Loudoun Alive applied for a grant to, for, uh, concerts through the Levitt Foundation. And so it's, it's up to the point now that it's asking for public votes. So that's going to be September 5th to the 15th. They kind of use the American Idol philosophy of the going on your cell phone and casting a vote, and you just text it, the number we, we shared on Facebook, uh, you just text Loud into this number, you get one vote per phone. And so we're hoping we can get one of the, one of the six spots at our amphitheater. What that is, what you agree to is three years, three years of concerts, seven concerts a year, and all the concerts are free to the public. So it would utilize our amphitheater, uh, with, with different talents and bands and things like that, uh, different genres of music. So something we really hope the public, and with, with a thousand responses on the public survey, that's great. So we'll be pushing that out. Uh, you can't vote till September 5th. It's for 10 days, September 5th to the 15th. Uh, and if you don't follow Loudoun Alive on, um, on Facebook, that, that would be good for you to search for that, and we'll be pushing that out. I'm sure the city will be pushing it out as well when we get that information finalized. Uh, just wanted to mention that. We'll jump back up, no, no action needs to be taken, whether there is on the appointments, but the fuel quote comparisons, August 8th, low quote for the first fuel receiver of Rogers Petroleum for the amount of $19,054. And then we have, I have one set of appointments to make, uh, and that is for the IDV. This is a six-year term, and I've spoken to these three individuals and they would like to be reappointed. I'd like to, uh, I guess, present them for unanimous consent. Joe Newman, Jackie Leffler, and Ruth Henderson McQueen. Is there any objections to any of those members? Okay, we'll consider them approved, made unanimous consent. All right. I, closing comments, I think we have some birthdays, and then we've got to go into executive session after I do some.
For administration, we have Michael Hogan, August 2nd. Melissa Huskins, August 23rd. Can't tell you which one's oldest, which one's younger.
No age, on that, on that page?
No age. Police Department, Justin Bradford, August 20th. Ben Everett, August 22nd. Jaden Jones, August 23rd. Fire Department, Bill James, August 22nd. Brian McFalls, August 24th. Public Works, Jason Bibbins, August 7th. Recreation Department, Jeremy McNally, August 7th. Water Department, CB Houston, August 7th. Larry Miller, August 18th. Sewer Department, Brian Lindsay, August 6th, I mean, excuse me, August 4th. Clay Townsend, August 6th. The Gas Department, Michael Kelly, August 31st. Adam Young, August 10th. Water Plant, Chris Thompson, August 21st. Wastewater Treatment Plant, Bill Collis, August 20th. And Customer Service, Kathy Braddings, August 16th. That's all, ma'am.
Well, I think we had four of those here tonight. Four of those birthdays, birthday to you, you all. Uh, we do have some, some, uh, work anniversaries to celebrate. Ashley Collins, three years in the County Department. Jeremiah Collis, Gas Department for three years. Adam Young, three years in the wastewater department. And one reason I read is I don't, I don't know who Adam Young is. I haven't met Adam Young. You know, he's been here three years. Y'all know who Adam Young is? I don't either. But he's, he's an employee of ours, so it's, I think it's good that we recognize these folks. Ty Davis, five years Sewer Department. Ryan Moore, five years in the County. Clifton Henry, he's been here eight years in Electric Department. Tony Thompson, 11 years, Water Department. Brian Lindsay, 13 years, Sewer Department. Brad Parks, 24 years, wastewater. Clay Townsend, 28 years, Sewer Department. Lynn Davis, 28 years, Gas Department. And then we recognize Chuckie Hughes, I think, in the utility board meeting. He celebrates 30 years of service in the wastewater department. That's from the utility side. City of Loudoun, you're going to hear a lot of police and fire. They really hired a lot of people in August. Luke Hawkins, one year, Loudoun Police Department. Aaron Gray, one year, Loudoun Fire Department. Jared Valetto, two years, Loudoun Police Department. Cameron Kelly, two years, Loudoun Police Department. Greg Johnson, three years, Loudoun Fire Department. Mark Erluna, four years, Loudoun Police Department. Our Michael Hogan, congratulations, Michael, five years, Engineering Department. Brian McFalls, 10 years, Loudoun Fire Department. Sean Bibbins, 17 years, Facilities and Maintenance. And Love Clifton, 19 years, in the Loudoun Police Department. So I want to thank those employees for the dedicated service to our cities and utilities. Any other closing comments before we go into executive session, committee? Kevin, do you have anything to say? Okay, we're going to close this, uh, we're going to recess at 7:11. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to leave. Uh, council's going to go into executive session.
We have to.